Good evening, and I welcome you to this June 2 meeting of the Paducah Planning and Zoning Commission. I ask that you please stand with us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Summers, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Benbury?
Here.
Mr. Morrison?
Here.
Ms. Schramke?
Here.
Mr. Shadle?
Mr. Wade?
Chair Grisillas?
Here. Mr. Morrison, I believe you have the minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion, please.
I move that the reading of the minutes from May 19, 2014 be waived and that the minutes of said meeting as prepared by the Secretary be approved as written.
Second.
Second by Benbury and Schramke. Are there any corrections? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Mr. Benbury?
Aye.
Chair Grisillas?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke, I believe you have the first item of business?
I do. I move that this commission remove from the table the application of John Lenka for the proposed revocation of the condominium plat as recorded in miscellaneous plat book I, pages 82-85, for property located at 331 North 8th Street.
Second.
Second by Morrison. I believe, would you like to explain?
Sure. I was in contact with his surveyor a couple weeks ago. They're not sure if they want to go ahead and fully pursue the revocation at this time or just submit a brand-new waiver abolishing the condominium lot lines. They haven't got their minds made up yet, so if you could please re-table for a date or continue generally, that would be the best option in this case.
We do need to go ahead and vote on the motion that's here before we do that, though. If you don't mind, call the roll.
Okay. Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Mr. Benbury?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Chair Grisillas?
Aye.
Now, would entertain a motion to continue this item of business generally?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Benbury. So, is there discussion? Any comments? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Mr. Benbury?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Chair Grisillas?
Aye.
Mr. Benbury, I believe you have the Douglas and Judy Lips property?
Yes. I move that this commission receive and file the application of Douglas and Judy K. Lips and Judy Lips, Elsie Properties, for the proposed re-subdivision of property located at 5300 Cairo Road. I further move that the requested approval be given and compliance with all other applicable provisions of the Paducah subdivision ordinance be waived.
Second by Morrison.
I'm Rick Tosh of Dummer Surveying and Engineering. This is some property that's out on Cairo Road at exit 3. If you're familiar with the site, it's where the Baymontian motel is. This property was made up of numerous small tracts, and a few years ago, there was a plat filed in plat section K, 1446, that abolished these interior lot lines and established the overall property into three tracts. Track 1 being the motel site, and track 2 and track 3 being vacant properties for future development. And at that time, an ingress egress easement was established to serve all three of these lots, being most especially Lot 1, since it didn't have access to uncontrolled right-of-way. Well, when Olivet Church Road was reworked by the Highway Department, that access was relocated. And after they relocated, it was well outside of the plat at easement. So with this plat, we are not only establishing an easement around the existing entrance, but we are also expanding the lot size for the motel on the east, west, and south sides. We're also establishing a stormwater detention easement that's on the east side of the motel that was developed in conjunction with the motel site, and it was designed to accommodate all three tracts of land once they're fully developed. All the previous utility easements that were established by the previous plat are staying in place. We are establishing some new utility easements along the new right-of-way of Olivet Church Road, and I believe that's pretty much it.
I know that part of the discussion was that they were interested in putting a pool in at some time?
Yes, and my recommendations tell them, because there's really, where they want to put it, there's just not a place for it. My recommendation was to look at the area on the backside of the motel site there, maybe taking a couple of the three of the parking spaces out if that would still meet the parking requirements and using part of this green area that was added in with it.
I'm glad that you are reworking the ingress and egress easement, because it has substantially changed.
Oh, yes.
The original plat?
Two different animals.
Any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Benbury?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Chair Grisillas?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison, I believe you have the last item of business?
Yes, ma'am. I move that this commission receive and file the application of Falconite Development, Inc., for the proposed re-subdivision of property located at 4615 Village Square Drive. I further move that the requested approval be given and compliance with all other applicable provisions of the Paducah subdivision ordinance be waived.
Second.
Second by Schramke.
This is pretty simple, just lot, lot division, Lot 6B of the Strawberry Hill subdivision, which is on the corner of James Sanders and Village Square, right across from the Paducah Bank Strawberry Hill branch. And Falconite Development is wanting to split the lot in two, and we're also creating a shared access or ingress egress easement, so that each lot would share together, which is in alignment with the curb cut for Paducah Bank across James Sanders Boulevard. So the shaded area is the ingress egress easement.
My first question when I looked at this plat was, are you going to be requesting a curb cut onto James?
Yeah, though, yes, definitely, there would be one, but the thought was, instead of doing two now, if having two lots, that might, you know, not really recommend it. So they're going to just share one curb cut instead of having two. There would have to be, well, there wouldn't have to be, but they would be able to have one to begin with if it was just one lot. So we're not increasing the number of curb cuts on James Sanders.
Well, there's no curb cut on this plat.
No, that's correct. This is just subdivision of the property, then we'll be submitting site plans and all that through planning and zoning and engineering for approval.
And they're?
So they'd have to weigh in on where that is and all that stuff.
And where would the curb cut be on?
Basically, in line with the shaded ingress egress easement, right in the middle of the lot, across from the Paducah Bank entrance.
Is the 24 feet enough initially to cover if all of that is taken up with perhaps a road at a later date, and still have an easement on each side of the road?
Well, the typical drive aisle width is 24 feet, and that's where we come up with that width. So the plan that we submit, it's already actually close to being complete, is a 24-foot drive aisle, and that's, it would basically straddle that easement. And the idea was to line it up with the drive aisle in front of the Village Shopping Center that's there to the west, and then as you go east across the lot, we put a bend in that easement, so it would line up with the existing curb cut across the road.
I think the question that Mr. Benbury is really asking is, is 24 feet wide enough if you intend to put a curb cut in there? Because then it won't just be a driving aisle anymore, then it'll be an access.
It'll be a road.
Yeah, well, it'll be, it'll just be an access drive that's 24 feet wide. It's designed currently as a 24-foot wide drive aisle. It won't ever be set up for public right-of-way or anything. It won't be wider than 24 feet.
But it's going to connect both of the roads, and then naturally, it's going to have traffic down. It will be a cut through.
Yes, I mean, it would, yeah, it would be used for that, but the road, it'll be, it won't be any wider than 24 feet, the road itself. But I guess saying, could it be in the future? Yeah, I mean, I guess someone could make a 30-foot wide drive aisle if they wanted, but just because of the size of the lot, you know, we're just going with the bare minimum, which is 24 feet. And if we made it, say, a 40-foot wide easement, there'd be area just in that easement that's not ever used.
Well, I'm looking at it, just traffic, if, I mean, if we cut, if you cut that 24-foot road, I know people are going to cut, use it as a cut-through between the two roads, and then you're going to have cars going and coming from both sides and having a little narrow space. That was my only concern, of traffic going between the two.
I do have?
Wider, I think it would be safer, especially with people egressing into the traffic of James Sanders and?
If I can make one very small comment, all residential subdivisions, the minimum pavement width is 22 feet, so this is still, still over that.
Well, let me back up a minute, I think I've got it here, but, okay, as it stands now, it could have an ingress egress, right, someplace on this big lot?
There is no curb cut there now.
There is no curb cut there, so therefore, by approving what we're looking at here, are we saying that we would then have a curb cut, or would, a curb cut, or would that be coming back with the?
It would have to, it would be, it would have to be approved by planning and zoning and engineering. So, in other words, I mean, what we're going to submit, follow up and submit through that process, will show a 24-foot wide curb cut and access drive, but they obviously have the right to disapprove, I mean, disapprove that, and if they did not, then basically, this would be all for nothing.
Well, the thing that I'm concerned about, I understand what you're saying, it'd be, it would be a cut-through, but, you know, I've seen the traffic, and it goes all the way back to where the cutout is for Home Depot. So I'm thinking that being able to either go left or right out of this would create quite a traffic problem.
Well, that's kind of the reason why we're doing the shared, I mean, if you, if we were to just show, if we were just subdividing the lot in half like we are and not providing any easement, technically, owner of Lot 6B2 could submit a site plan to planning and zoning and engineering requesting a curb cut there, and owner of Lot 6B1 could do the same. Now, they may not allow that, so what we're trying to do to, as sort of a compromise to that issue, because, you know, having two curb cuts will obviously be a little congested. So the owner here, Falconite Development, and the potential buyer of, said, hey, we're just going to, let's just do one drive, and we'll share ownership and maintenance of it, and that way, we won't have two. There is the potential now to have two, but we're only going to do one. I mean, there has to be at least one, I mean, I think that, I don't know if it's, I mean, you have to provide curb cut, I mean, you gotta have, you gotta provide access to that road. And yes, having one, having a curb cut closer to the intersection of Village Square Drive, that would, that would create an issue for cars wanting to come out and turn left, so we've shifted it to the, we've shifted it to the north to where, to where both can, can use that.
And just a small side note as well, as engineering has looked at this plat, and they didn't have any comments at all on it.
Well, you still have interior access here.
Right, there's a reciprocal access.
Correct. From, yeah, from Village Square Drive, that's right. I mean, they're not landlocked, I mean, yes, they do have access from that, but if?
I guess, can I have two? Is there not an elevation problem? Is this lot not higher than the road?
No.
It was.
Well, I mean, even if it is, I mean, during the site plan process, all of that will be, all that will be resolved as far as grades and drainage and all that good stuff. But no, it's fairly, I mean, it may be slightly, but it's, I mean, it's basically fairly flat for the most part. It kind of drains gradually to the north. But I would say if?
How wide is the curb cut at Paducah Bank?
It's, that one there is about, I want to say it's like 26 feet, maybe? It's roughly the same.
The one directly across from what you're talking about is the same size?
Roughly the same, maybe a couple feet wider.
I understand, but I still think this looks wider than that.
It's 26, but it has one business accessing it, and I mean, that one's busy. You're looking at building a road, basically, a narrow road.
I would say if, if there was no access granted to James Sanders for either one of these lots, and that pushes all the traffic over to that other aisle, and that would create a bigger issue there, I would, I mean, I can see that being an issue as well. But again, that's not my call.
Well, it's the same, I, you know, I'm very sensitive to access, especially in high-traffic areas, because I look at Kentucky Oaks Mall and all of those out parcels in the front that were designed to have access only from the back, that were all given curb cuts in the front, and the problem that that's created for that traffic pattern all along in front of the mall, that's just what I'm likening it to and, you know, concerned about.
Yeah, certainly, I mean, I understand where you're coming from there, I mean, but I feel, you know, we've, there's been some initial conversations with engineering on that, on this exact issue, and that's why we felt like this was the solution that kind of everybody had in mind, well, we're only going to grant one. I would say if, if the owner of, I can't imagine any developer would want to develop either lot if they had no access to James Sanders there. But again, that's, that's not where?
And I think from what we're discussing here, I don't think that, I think we're pretty well accepting the fact that there's going to be, or I am, a cut, one cut, because there could be two, I understand all that. I think the width is what is kind of a hang-up that I'm feeling, because it's such a large, large two parcels that it's being served by that.
Well, and the thing that concerns me is it's not just going to serve those two parcels, I mean, it's obviously going to serve the rest of that parking, oh, that.
Sure, they're going to avoid Village Square to come down that.
Sorry, are you suggesting that it just, if this was wider, that would, everybody would be happy with that?
Make me feel better.
Well, I'm not sure that's still going to make me happy, but my concern, again, is traffic. You know, my concern is the stacking on, on James Sanders Boulevard from the stoplight, and the amount of traffic that comes through that area, it concerns me that there's not going to be control there, that it's pretty much going to be, you know, everybody coming and going anyway they can manage to get through there. That's just my concern. It has nothing to do with the lots, it has nothing to do with the property, it only has to do with the concern over traffic, that's all.
Yeah, there are usually limitations on how close, well, engineering, you know, they always have input on that, and so does the Highway Department on state highways, but there's usually a minimum distance that you can even have a curb cut from an intersection, and we're beyond that here. I mean, this, this situation happens, I mean, yeah, that is a concern, but, I mean, this situation happens everywhere. I mean, we're two, we're 200 feet from that intersection. It's, I don't know.
But I, but I hear what you say also, that if this would not be ingress egress here, it would all be flowing to Village Square, and that already is a problem with the left-hand turn into those businesses there, those medical facilities. That's really stacking up now, so throwing all of this onto that would be even more of a problem. You know, where Dallas Medical is, that's where this is coming out, and if we didn't have that, I don't know, I don't know which is better.
I mean, I, you know, I can go into 30 feet, I'm just, I'm not necessarily against doing that, I'm just trying to think how big of a benefit, what we're really gaining by doing that, I don't know really what, to be honest, because some fairly major roadways are only 24 feet wide, curb-to-curb.
If it were, and again, I don't know the sizes of lanes, if it were 30 feet, would it have a lane to make a left and a lane to make a right?
No, you wouldn't, no, you wouldn't have any, you'd have to go to 36 to do that.
36 would, that would be ideal, that would?
Well, I don't, honestly, I don't think, well, I don't, yeah, I don't know, but I don't know if the traffic counts would warrant going to that.
Well, but we think that there's going to be an overflow from this adjoining development. And that would break it up, that wouldn't have that long.
Again, I don't know, all of this, whatever site plan we submit, whether it's a 24-foot wide or a 50-foot wide, I mean, it has to go through planning and zoning and engineering for their approval, and if that's, that may, you know, I guess they're?
Come back to us, then?
No.
No.
Done.
And basically, they could say, no, we, we got to have a 40-foot entrance, I'm just throwing that out there, here's why, and the 24-foot wide still gives them, I mean, that's just an easement, it still gives them what they need for access across the lot lines, even if engineering were to say, you know, we need it, we need it to be wider based on traffic counts or congestion or whatever it may be. I guess what I'm saying is, I, you know, I'm not denying some of the concerns you guys have, I just know that whatever actual plan we submit, that, you know, they will be able to comment on that, I guess have the, the final say from the city's perspective on that, and that's, I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's to be resolved here tonight, if it is, you know, I understand.
We all just drive through that area quite a bit, and we're all?
Oh, I do, too.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and it's getting worse, and I think we're all just concerned about creating additional problems instead of resolving some of those traffic issues. I'm not really sure that we, like you said, we could sit here and actually resolve it, but that's?
We just want to exacerbate the problem by something that we do.
I think, though, that the way that it's laid out, by connecting the two entry points to the shopping center and Paducah Bank with it lining up across there, that's actually going to, if somebody's going across James Sanders, cars aren't going to have to turn on James Sanders or Village Square and then?
Of course.
And then travel down James Sanders and back in, that way, there's a straight shot.
That's not really what the problem is.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, that's just good planning to line up things like that if you're going to do it. That's not our concern, our concern is primarily, you know?
Narrowness.
What, what that's going to do to the area.
And, and the movement of the flow of traffic, you know, like you said, the 36 would lock to go either left or right with the lanes that accommodate that, that'd make me feel better.
It makes sight, too, for drivers, I mean, I know it meets the minimum requirement, but when you get wider, people can see it's going to ease the traffic.
Have you given any thought to maybe one lane outright turn only and then one lane in?
I mean, we can always designate a right turn only, I mean, that's?
That way, your traffic wouldn't be coming out and trying to turn left and go north on James Sanders, and I'm just threw that out, too.
That can, I mean, if that's?
Think about that, because that would be?
That would certainly create less of a problem.
It usually kind of ends up leasing itself, I mean, when, say, the cars were stacked up that deep on James Sanders, and somebody's wanting to turn left or not, they're just not, they can't.
Well, it has?
I mean, we, because we come up, we, we see this a lot, like, all right, well, how close can we have that curb cut, right, you know, this intersect, properties at intersections are always the most valuable where everybody wants, so like, where can our curb cut be? And so a right turn only is always something that's discussed, but generally, we try to push it far enough away to where we feel like we're getting behind that stacking, to where they can make that left-hand turn, but?
It hasn't helped in front of Home Depot, they don't have a left-hand and right-hand turn.
Yeah.
You know, and it's constantly backed up to Walmart, so, I mean, you know, it's just part of the problem there.
Yeah.
There's a lot of people and a lot of cars.
Well, I don't know there will be that, that much traffic coming out of here that's compared to Home Depot and Walmart, but certainly the same idea.
I think there will be because of the development that's going to happen back in the, rest of the Strawberry Hill, there's awful lot of vacant land laying right there. It's, you know, prime properties.
I think it's good to have, the homeowner, I mean, the owners need to have access, I mean, I think we all agree with that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And we want it to be developed, it's just looking, public safety and visibility, those kind of things, not just meeting the minimum, or, it's just my concern. I like that 36-foot, I agree with you, it would make me feel better, because it could, if you do the 24, and it comes back, and we don't, it could be 22, actually, so that even makes it narrower, and then park a truck there to turn left-hand on James Sanders or the other road.
I guess?
It takes forever to undo something like that.
Again, I, I mean, that's something that, I don't know where the, who's call that is on how wide it has to be, if that is decided here tonight, I, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I would, I would have thought that was something that engineering would approve or disapprove, and even, you know, and if so, if that's what, I mean, it just has to be the developers' call-in if they want to proceed.
Typically, curb cuts and things like that are approved through the engineering office, and?
But if it went in requesting finalized plat with a 36, engineering wouldn't say, no, cut it back to 22?
Okay.
But honestly, even if they did say to go to a 36, the 24-foot is still, as far as the easement goes, it's still adequate. All that is, is providing them legal right to drive across that land or use that drive aisle.
At some point in time, too, the owners of the two lots, once it was sold, they could enter into a private agreement to increase that easement, or they could not have an easement there, sell the lots freestanding like that, and then come back in and create an easement, because it's a private road, it's not being dedicated. I mean, this is not a dedication of a public road, it's a private road.
Right.
It's a private easement.
Of course, the main thing we were trying to do is, and if, is to get the lots subdivided, that's the main thing, even without the, you know, if the easement was something that we had to adjust or whatever, I don't think there would be a major, major issue there, but I think we would want to have some input from engineering on it as well, so, you know, I don't know, tonight, how, how that can be resolved since this easement is shown on here. I don't know.
I just don't know what engineering does with it, I guess I'd feel more comfortable if I knew exactly how that process works, I apologize, I don't know. Maybe they're talking about all these same things, looking at these same things, and traffic flow and all that, and?
Right, on the city-owned?
Professionals.
Or the city-maintained streets, including James Sanders, they do look at things like your traffic counts and your curb cuts and the signal? your traffic counts and your curb cuts and the signal timing, and they do look at all that.
So this is a private road, excuse me, but once the cuts are put in, yeah, how does that work? I mean-
It's just city property into, to the, to the property line.
Through the property line.
And it's maintained by the owners of the, of the easement.
And they have to get a permit through engineering to put that curb cut in.
Okay. Just like Kathy's statement about when they put them all in, state highway, so the state, even though you're supposed to be served from the rear, state highway came in and plowed all those curb cuts down.
Created that problem.
Right.
That was a state.
Well, and I think what we're hearing here, or what I'm hearing, is that, you know, our job is to approve the property line, engineering's job is to-
Kind of what I was-
Traffic flow goes as it should, so I guess we can't be trying to do what engineering's supposed to be doing.
That's kind of what I was trying to say, is nice as possible, I didn't know if that could be shot down tonight or what.
Yes, another way to say it is, it doesn't make any difference what we do here, engineering can do whatever they want.
It's, it's pretty much, they're the ones that are gonna-
I mean, that's basically what we're getting to, so-
Sure.
I guess probably what we need to do is just go ahead and approve the plat and turn your loose.
Well, but, you know, I think the discussion is good, I think it's on record how we, we feel.
How we feel about it, yes.
And, uh, our questions and our concerns, and maybe that'll help engineering come up with, uh, some more information.
And, and part of that, too, is when we get a, a site plan for that lot, traffic generation's gonna be based on what it actually is, too. Um, being that size of a lot, uh, and a proposed use for it, like an office or something, ain't, isn't gonna generate as much as a restaurant or something like that, too, so that's something that we'll be taking into consideration when we get the site plan.
Yeah, I guess the main thing's the lot line, if engineering comes about and says, hey, we gotta have a sixty-foot entrance here, you guys are gonna have to adjust your easement, then, well, we would have to come back to you guys and get it approved, or they would do a private written agreement between the two lot owners, and, you know, at that point, have no problem with it.
If you have peak hours unused to, like if it's a, like an Outback, you know, you wouldn't have any traffic until probably about five o'clock in the afternoon or five-thirty, because they, they don't serve breakfast and they don't serve lunch, so, you know, those, those are the type of things engineering would probably look at, too, is how much traffic is going to push off on it. Now, of course, you're gonna have people from the shopping center going through there, but they see a stack of cars there, you know, and I'm-
You're gonna have people avoiding the lot, the light also.
Yeah, they're gonna cut through.
So.
They're gonna avoid the light for sure. Yeah, it will be a cut through.
But-
Of course, that's all over town, I mean, it's, mm-hmm.
But, I mean, we have to-
I'm still glad we talked about it, I'm still glad our questions and our concerns are, have been voiced, and engineering might find some of that helpful when they make their decisions.
I hope engineering will hear what we said.
Will engineer hear what we say, Josh?
I will make sure engineering is heard.
Take big notes.
I will say, they have heard, or ha, ha, have somewhat suggested, um, the shared drive instead of having two, that was kind of, they ran on that, we didn't get into widths and all that yet, it's too early, but they did have a little input on at least the location of it, and kind of urged us to do this instead of trying to get two separate cu, uh, curb cuts.
Well, like we said, we have no desire to keep this land from being developed.
Oh, no.
Sure, I understand.
Our big concern is traffic. You know, I don't want, I don't want anybody to die out there because of something we did.
Sure.
I don't think you do either, I'm sure you don't.
No.
Oh, we haven't voted yet.
Well, I, I've said all I had to say, all I can say, so, you guys vote.
Oh, thank you, sir. I think you, I think you're gonna be okay, but don't think it's yet.
Forget that, I'm done. That was more fun than all of them.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Mr. Benberry?
Aye.
Chair Crisilla?
Aye.
All righty.
You did a good job of, uh, explaining it to us and, or your developer also.
Thank you.
If there's no other business, we call this meeting adjourned.